Talk to me.
Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Would you please join me in standing up for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone who wants to address the school committee this evening?
Is this on? Okay. I hope that the recording is working tonight.
Do give us your name and address, please.
Melissa Bubble, 650 Third Avenue, One Socket, Rhode Island. Where do I begin? Honestly, there's not enough time to address everything that, well, quite frankly, you already know, haven't fixed, can't fix, in the process of fixing, or don't intend to fix because you're hoping that the new school is built in time. But anyway, here we are, closing up the year with the past few meetings of upset, frustrated parents, staff, and students about our school system yet again. I also heard about the horrible graduation debacle as well, as some students received diplomas on construction paper. Not sure if that's exactly true or not, but if so, really? I have been notified that a parent's child has been extremely injured at school, so bad that he may need continued medical care as he grows and will definitely need continued visits to monitor the damage. The parent was obviously distressed on the day, et cetera. The damage done should have resulted in an ambulance call or at least considered. She was also not guided in what steps to take or how to have anything paid for or helped paid for by the school since it happened at school. Medical may not pay for the continued damage that he needs to have done. With this, the family may fall in debt due to medical bills. I've been doing my best to help this parent, something that the school and all of you should be doing. I ask you, aren't most of you or some of you parents, would you be okay with just a dead-end support after your child experienced this horrific incident? In the emails your office sends parents weekly on updates about schools, et cetera, it says cultivating a community. Tell me, how can you honestly say that when our school system is failing on multiple levels, including support for parents, students, and as well as not just for the staff? It seems that your main focus is on the new school while all of our schools need repairs. I used to have so much pride in living in One Socket. Now I'm glad my son goes to Coleman Elementary School because, my God, have they done a great job at everything, including safety for all in the school, and that my oldest has had amazing teachers thus far at Hamlet because they couldn't help him at Villa. I am now debating moving out of the city like most families due to the school system. So if that new school is built and you do merge the middle schools, I hope you're ready for a good show because that's what you will get. You have no idea the support our students need on a daily basis. I encourage you to spend a day in a teacher's shoes with multiple kids who need licensed support staff who now have none. All you seem to do is take things away to save money instead of connecting with the community to get things done or raise money. Other schools do it. They fundraise during the summer for repairs. Another example is companies have been calling the Votech School, offering employment to our graduates in different fields with no calls back. I now call on all of you parents and guardians at home or at work. If you have any issues with your school, I encourage you, instead of coming to me, you find a way to come to these meetings. If you don't have a sitter, bring your kids. I do. They are here with me tonight. They too can speak at the podium or call and email the school committee members with your concerns. Your voices do need to be heard and not just by me. Their information is on the school committee website. School committee members constantly say they're here to listen. Let's see. My goal is to educate everyone on your positions and these meetings to hopefully have some more support and changes for the better. When I speak here, I speak for all of the schools in our district, even though I'm a parent of kids in Coleman and Hamlet schools. Lastly, congratulations to all who graduated this year. I hope you make something out of yourself and prove that One Socket can somehow help you get on the right foot and the path to a great career. And yes, I do have to get my kids to bed for their last week of school, so I will be leaving after my comment, and I will listen and see the rest of the meeting later. Good night.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee?
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Shauna Lee Gonzalez. I reside at
Excuse me, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
There we go.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Shauna Lee Gonzalez, and I reside at 86 Borden Boulevard, One Socket. I am here tonight to speak not only on my behalf, but also on behalf of many parents and families, including my brother, who endured a deeply disappointing and frustrating experience at the 2025 high school graduation ceremony. Despite having valid invitations, numerous parents were denied entry to the ceremony. My brother, for instance, was turned away at the door, even when he respectfully asked if he could simply wait in the auditorium and step into the gym for a brief moment to photograph his child receiving her diploma. He was refused. He was told that everyone must be seated. This, despite the fact that many individuals inside the gym were already standing. The conditions inside the venue were also concerning. The gymnasium was overcrowded, excessively hot, and lacked proper ventilation or cooling systems. There were no fans or air conditioning running. As a result, some attendees experienced medical distress and some even fainted. Parents should never have to miss this once-in-a-lifetime milestone due to a disorganization and poorly planning. To add to this disappointment, the ceremony lacked the dignity of our graduates deserve. There was no proper stage, no diploma covers, only a folder piece of paper that was kind of like a word stock. This does not reflect the significance of the achievement or the hard work that these students have put in over the years. This experience raises an important question. How would you feel if it was your child who were denied the opportunity to see them to graduate? These are moments that cannot be recreated, and the pain and frustration felt by the parents will linger long after the day has passed. To prevent this from happening again, I propose the committee consider implementing a more secure and organized ticketing process, such as issuing tickets with attendees' names on them to prevent handoffs and ensure that only authorized family members enter. Additionally, I urge this committee to develop a clearback plan for future ceremonies to ensure that every graduate and their families can enjoy this important day with dignity, comfort, and pride. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Shauna Lee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just had a couple of questions of the whole.
Name and address, please.
Excuse me?
Your name and your address.
My name is Juaniel Velas Babylonia. I live on 84 Asylum Street, and I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the whole Villanova transportation thing, about some of the eighth graders that are being moved. I wanted to ask if there was any way where I can stay in this school, if there are.
We do not respond to you during good and welfare.
All right.
But Dr. McGee may be addressing this.
Can I just say?
Yeah, go ahead.
So thanks for being here tonight. I did get some of your emails today. I will be reaching out to those of you who sent me an email. I want to meet with you guys to explain to you the reasoning and why this is happening. So I will be reaching out to you probably sometime tomorrow.
All right. So I just wanted to say that this school meant a lot to me because I've been here since sixth grade, and the people I've met have been amazing to me for the two years that I've met them. They've been my best friends. They've joined my gym. We've been to the gym together for like almost a whole year now, and it's as if they're a part of me. And the day before yesterday, two days ago, when I was told that I was being moved to Villanova, it's as if a part of me was being ripped apart because not only was I going to lose most of my friends because there's not really a way we can hang out because a lot of them have strict parents. I just wouldn't be able to be there for when they graduated because those kids are like my brothers. I see them like they're my family, and I was hoping to see them graduate, but I was being moved to Villa. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
You can adjust the mic to you.
You can raise the mic. There you go. Do we have your name and address?
Andy Llorano, and I live on 142 More Heights.
Okay.
I was here to like say about, I think it was two days ago or yesterday, they were talking about like moving us to Villa. We were also wondering why were they just picking randomly instead of giving us options of like people staying and people going if they wanted to go? We're also wondering, some people have actually been here for a lot of years and likes this school and has friends. Y'all are just moving them without thinking about their feelings and stuff and not really like, you don't know what the persons are going through and their friends and stuff.
Dr. McGee, would you address this in your comments?
I think I can address it right. I mean, we're going to meet. I did get your emails, and I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow, and we can sit down with the principals and explain what's happening and so that you guys understand what, you know, the reasoning behind some of the decisions. But we will. We'll sit with you guys and we'll explain it to you guys, okay?
Okay. That's all I wanted to say from now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
All right. So my name is Javon Anthony Hazard. I live on 252 Rathman Street. And so I only been here for a year, and the friends that I made have been pretty amazing. And if I've been here, why would they like move me to Villa? And like, that's pretty much all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else that wants to address the school committee this evening?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Lena McClair, and I live on 380 Blackstone Street. I'm also here to address the eighth grade move. For me, it's been two years since I've been here, and I've made some pretty good friends. I was scared at first to come here, and I know some of the people that are sitting down are were too. So it would be even more scary to meet new people in eighth grade when you already know half the people in this school already, and you've already made friendships over the two years or one year you have been here. Also, my two years being here, I've had an amazing time with the teachers, and I've had fun during the year. So like, I don't understand why we have to move to Villa when we're already a part of the school. And like one of my classmates have said, like, half of our heart is a part of the school because this is where we have our education. So like, if we move to Villa, it'd be like a part of us getting ripped apart. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
Do we have a translator here? Someone would like to speak, but she needs a translator for Spanish.
No, we don't.
Sorry, just trying to help out.
Because you speak Spanish.
Very good job.
Okay. No, 142 More Heights.
I'm just saying your name, Carmen Gonzalez, 142 More Heights Boulevard.
Thank you. Yeah.
All right. She wanted to say that as a mother, she's really concerned for her son because of the.
Como era? Consejería, consejería y psiquiatra. Psiquiadrí. Consejero, psiquiatra. Este, yo voy a traer el carta porque yo no sé cómo él me reacciona. Él me llegó a mi casa reaccionando mal el primer día que le hicieron lo que hicieron, que lo iban a cambiar de escuela.
So he does a lot of counseling and stuff, and she was just worried because she doesn't know like how he's going to react to the whole thing because he went home the other day because of the thing all crying and sad and angry, and that's not like him. And as a mother, she was just concerned of the whole thing, and she just wanted to make sure that he stayed because he's been here already for two years and he loves the school. He doesn't want to move, and she's just worried. Because he doesn't really do well with change. She says she's willing to do whatever it takes, even if it means she breaks the news here. She's willing to do whatever it takes to make sure he stays.
Well, Dr. McGee, you're meeting with.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I mean, I'm. I can't go into it right now, but it's, the main reason is that we had to close an eighth grade classroom because of budget constraints. So I'm going to reach out to you guys tomorrow, and we'll schedule a time where we can sit down with your family, with your parents, and talk about what's happening, okay? I don't know what happened in terms of the schools, you know, notifying you guys or telling you. I just know that that was a decision that we made to eliminate one of the eighth grade teams. But we'll reach out. I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow. I have your emails. I'll come to the school, and we'll schedule a time where we can sit down and we can talk about it, okay?
Is there anything else that you need to address the school committee because your five minutes are over, and we're going to have, Dr. McGee will get ahold of you to set up a meeting, and you'll understand what's going on?
Yeah, we understand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee? Hearing none. Dr. McGee, we'll go into recognitions and announcements.
Chairman, so the class of 2025 graduated on Friday, June 6th. We had well over 320 students who graduated, which was one of the largest graduating classes in recent memory. Tomorrow, Thursday, June 12th, the One Socket Education Department retiree celebration will be held at the One Socket Elks Lodge from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. We have 28 staff members who are retiring this year. The One Socket Education Department Employees of the Year for this past year will be recognized at a meeting in the fall. I just wanted to name those employees of the year. The Administrator of the Year is Saftar Mahmoud, Assistant Principal at the Career Center. Teacher of the Year is Ashley Paley, who was at Vernon Heights Elementary. Paraprofessional of the Year is Patricia Collins, who was at Hamlet Middle School. The Secretary of the Year is Brenda Plasse, who was the Nurse Secretary at the High School, Hamlet, and Villanova Middle Schools. The Custodian Maintenance Worker of the Year is Matt Phillips, who was at Vernon Heights Elementary. And the Support Staff Member of the Year is Tom Wakely III, who is a Technology Specialist for the District. District's Summer Professional Development for Staff, as we hold each year, it's a week-long opportunity for our teachers and staff to participate in professional development that will be held during the week of June 23rd through the 27th. The last day of school this year is next Monday, June 16th. Summer break and first days of the 25-26 school year, I suppose it's never too soon to announce that, will be the first day of the 25-26 school year, August 26th, and that's for students in grades one through nine in kindergarten. Kindergartners whose last name begin with the letters A through L. August 27th is the first day for students in grades 10 through 12 in kindergarten, students with their last name beginning with the letters M through Z. And then August 28th, all students in grades K through 12 will be in attendance. I want to wish everybody a very safe, happy, relaxing, and restful summer vacation, and look forward to seeing everyone again in the late summer, early fall. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does anyone have any questions or comments for our superintendent? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 14, 2025 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes? Modification to those minutes. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the May 14, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the May 28, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes, modifications to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now we'll go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Anyone who want to take any items out of order or discuss any particular items in the consent agenda? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, I'll ask you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, the WED held its annual teacher job selection fair right here at Hamlet Middle School. We have currently going into the summer for next year, 17 open positions, and we have a total of 14 layoffs. So our hope is that, as we've stated before, that we will be able to bring back, recall teachers and staff as we get more information about our federal and state funding. So the hope is we bring, as soon as we, you know, get that information, and we have had an opportunity to sit down and to prioritize and to look at the positions that were cut, it's our hope to bring back as many as possible. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Dr. McGee, you know, looking at all these names on the personnel matters, a lot of them are pending enrollment. Okay, so my question is, are we running a traditional summer school program this year? Academic one? These are all academic classes?
So we're not. In years past, we've used ESER funds for our summer programming, which was actually recognized by the Department of Education, specifically the commissioner. She actually came out a few years ago to witness it. And unfortunately, we were unable to provide those services this summer. So what we are doing is, I'll start at the high school. We are providing an opportunity for our high school students to gain credit recovery, you know, for the following.
So that is a traditional summer.
So that's a traditional summer school. Elementary, we do not, and middle school, we do not. One thing that we are offering for our eighth graders, who will be ninth graders next year, is we're offering an Algebra I summer camp, which we actually offered last year, and this is funded through the Department of Education. It's the Noven Prime Camp, and one of the things that we noticed with our data is that the students who did attend this, it's pre-algebra, it's getting our eighth graders ready for Algebra I. The students that were involved, and it basically is, parents are notified of this opportunity, and those who took advantage of it, they did pretty well in Algebra I this past year at the high school. So it's a great opportunity. I've put this out in my newsletter. I'm going to continue to put it out in my newsletter, just advertising it to parents. I highly recommend that our eighth grade parents take advantage of this so that their ninth graders will be better prepared for Algebra I at the high school.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to.
Actually, we do have extended school year as well. I just wanted to make sure that the committee is aware of that. So our students with IEPs, our ESY program is.
The elementary schools.
Elementary through high school.
So our high schools will be operating in the summer. The middle school will be operating this summer with the pre-algebra.
So.
About the elementary, I'm also thinking of, are we providing nutrition?
So ESY, Extended School Year, is at Pothier Globe Park and Villanova. The middle schools and the high school have combined, used to be at the high school and at the middle school, but we've combined them this summer. So for ESY, it'll be next door at Villanova. I know that, so your question was about meals, summer meals?
Summer meals.
So summer meals, which that was something that I sent out in last week's newsletter as well, is notifying parents and families. I think if they call 211, they can get information about which locations in the city that the free meals will. free meals will be made available to to students.
I heard that the only one will be at the Splash Park.
I don't know. Brad, do you? Do you have any any Chartwells info from?
Currently, the plan is to serve food while our students are in school in each one of the schools that summer session is going on. And then we will have one location at the Splash Park for the community. That's correct.
Well, that's that's what's going on, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. Mrs. Kepiscus, would you give us the C L A C update?
Mr. Chair of the C L A C had its last meeting of this school year on June 5th. There were only five people present, Mr. Notorianni, Ms. Morel, Heather Edward, our secretary, myself and one parent. There was no presentation, old business, same things discussed, looking for a new C L A C chair still. Busting issues across the district, nothing to report. Updates for graduation requirements for students with I E Ps, no updates from Ride. Dismantling of the U. S. Department of Education and its effects on our students with disabilities, no real info yet. Ms. Morel advised she just received her allocation and they were slightly lower, but maybe due to a carryover from this year, she not receive any data yet. She hopes to have it in time for our meeting in September. She usually receives the allocation in April, so everything is very far behind, courtesy of the attempting to dismantle U. S. Department of Ed. Under new business, Ms. Morel was prepared to present on obtaining behavioral supports for our students. There was only one parent present. She advised she was familiar with the process, so that's been put on hold. And not to contradict you, Dr. McGee, but we also talked about E S Y. Ms. Morel advised that it would be running E S Y again is the school program, Extended School Year Program for Students with I E Ps. She advised that it would be running at Globe, Pothier and the high school, not Villanova. Due to our makeup hours, Globe will run Monday through Thursday. The high school, which will be housing both the high school students and the middle school students with I E Ps, will run Monday through Friday. The program runs 3.5 hours per day. The middle school will be at the high school, as there were only seven students from the middle school attending. Some parents are upset that certain paraprofessionals are not working E S Y. Ms. Morel wants to make sure that everyone is aware that she cannot mandate anyone to work E S Y. If your students one-to-one did not apply for a position, she cannot force them to take that position during the summer. She will try to match the students as best as possible with the one-to-ones who are available. There are currently 23 openings, currently the applicants for 20 openings. They do not expect a shortage with regard to Paris. However, there is potentially a shortage for S I D teachers as no one applied internally. There is, there will be no transition studies program this year due to the lack of funds and lack of interest last year. No one signed up. Superintendent's report, he was not present. I believe he was at the sports awards for the high school. Special Director gave a report during E S Y earlier. As school committee liaison, I shared updates on our next meeting dates and our subcommittee meeting dates. The next C L A C meeting will be on Thursday, September 4th, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. And will be virtual unless there is a new chair and they decided to change that. Our meeting lasted all of 12 minutes and we adjourned at 6:12.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any questions or comments for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the C L A C update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Burke and Ms. Costa, would you give us the health and wellness update?
You can do the honors.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Subcommittee met on Monday, June 2nd. We approved our minutes from February 10th and April 28th. And then we went our basic format. We had an update from Chartwells. They talked about some of their pluses this year, some of the things they were working on for next year. But the main thing they did talk about was July 16th, from 11:30 to 1:00 will be the opening day summer food program, which will be at the Splash Park. And they will be at the Splash Park throughout the summer between 11:30 and 1:00. So July 16th will be the big opening. So you're all welcomed, you're all are welcome to attend that. And I asked about the other ones, Dr. McGee, because in summers past, more of our schools were in business and and they provided, you know, at the times, they provided nutrition and food at the schools. Now, not all the schools are being used this year, but there's still only one site in the city. So the Splash Park is the main site. They're not going to be around other places in the city other than in the other schools. So that's something families need to be aware of. So we had a good meeting with them. U R I SNAP Ed program. We we met a new a new member of the U R I program, Stephanie. Unfortunately, well, she had her first good news was that there was a school nutritional SNAP training that she invited, you know, members of Chartwells and to attend. So there was a possibility. But the problem too is that the U R I SNAP Ed program, they are almost like 99% sure that the SNAP Ed program is canceled, that the funding has been taken away. So there'll be no SNAP Ed programs. Now, we've been pretty lucky over the last several years, working with our fifth graders at various schools that we've had some of these programs from the U R I. Now, they still provide some nutrition, educational information, which will still be available. But but the SNAP Ed program, as we've known, it could be gone. Okay, it's not being funded. Project Aware, S E L Mental Health and Wellness gave us a pretty good presentation and they serve as an umbrella for a lot of different things, which I'll just highlight. First of all, they would talk about that they received a grant. There was a grant that there will be a Hazel Health, a telehealth program, which was great was great news. They also talked about positive behavior programs that that will be ongoing. And the staff, most of the staff, 19 members of the staff have taken the suicide prevention program that is part of this umbrella. And we were very proud of the fact that we have 120 students that were peer mentors for next year at the high school. And from that program, there would be 40, 40 of them became teen mental health students. You know, and once again, I think we are one of the first schools in the state that has this number of mental health peers. So obviously, some some great things being presented there. Then the Wensocket Prevention Coalition, Derek came to speak with from for that for that group. And by the way, to this afternoon, from 3:00 to 6:00, and I was there, the Wensocket Prevention Coalition celebrated its 40th anniversary with with a great program down at its headquarters on Main Street. So that was great news to see. And they continue some of the programs that they have at the school here, working in the summer with C C F, some of their preventive programs like Above the Influence. They have a student group called Equal. And they also have another successful student group called Swag that meets down at the headquarters of the Wensocket Prevention Coalition throughout the week. And we have 20, 20 students involved in the Swag program this summer out of 50 applicants. So 50 kids apply to be part of this group and they would, they had to whittle it down to 20, that's all they could handle. So so those are some of the the good things that the Wensocket Prevention Coalition continues to do. And finally, Corinne from the Rhode Island Health and Schools Coalition, she just directed our attention to the newsletter and the website that that they have. And she talked about, she talked about the summer safety room. Was that her?
Yeah, that was her that talked about that, yeah.
So we 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 heard a lot of her programs, so she just directed our attention to her newsletter. And I think.
That was it? Mm-hmm. All right. Yeah. The only question I have for you is, did you dress up like the 80s for today?
Well, this is what I wore in the 80s, so I've been wearing the same things for the last 20 years. I guess my answer is yes.
Yes.
We adjourned at 5:07 and this was our last meeting for the school year, so we will be meeting in September October of next year.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke.
Okey dokey.
One question, the July 16th opening at the Splash Park, is that open to everyone in the city?
Yes.
Just not the students, but it could be anyone?
Oh, anybody, yeah, anybody, yeah. They always operate, yeah, anybody.
Question, that's daily also.
That's, that's, I believe.
Are there's a week?
Yep. But it's only there in the city.
Yes.
All right, that's great. Any anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the health and wellness update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Notorianni, would you give us your technology facilities update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as of this evening, there are 53 overall technology work orders in the system, 47 belonging to technology infrastructure, which of which couple are waiting for parts. There are three related to data systems and state reporting, and the three remaining ones are broken Chromebooks that are being processed. I'm happy to report that the Chromebook collection process at the high school is currently underway. High school administrative team is working diligently to collect as many devices as possible while balancing out the fact that they have to leave Chromebooks in the hands of the students to do final exams. Or their other option at the high school would be to have final exams on paper and collect Chromebooks earlier in the year, which has been an option suggested to them on multiple occasions. And as the committee is aware, we've had a poor collection rate in the past. And next year, the high school is just going to be directed to work on a plan for that if we have to, if we were short Chromebooks. We are currently in the process of replacing several systems in the tech department. One is our work ticket system, work order system. The second one's our facility scheduler system. The third one is our content filtering system. It's worth noting that we're doing those projects over the summer and they will result in approximately $100,000 in savings for the budget for 2526. For state reporting, we are in the process of wrapping up data reporting for the end of the year. Final state reporting will conclude on July 11th. In the memo, it lists out all of the state reports and their sign-off dates for your perusal. Earlier today, the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner provided a preview of the new accountability system and guidance needed for building principles. This accountability tools were something that we covered at a tech subcommittee previously and at our last school committee, I covered that topic, I think extensively with the committee. But Riot has notified us that the principals need to start using that as part of the new accountability process for their schools. Student registration, as of today, we have 250 grade K registrations. And just to give you perspective, this year, last year at this time, we only had 195. So we're actually 55 ahead. I don't think we're going to have more kindergarten registrations than we did last year for the start of school, but we are trending ahead of where we were in prior years. And I think it's worth noting, this year, we did not do a K registration on a Saturday, which incurred an expense because we had to have staff come in a Saturday. And we did not do the outreach that we normally would do. We partnered with Head Start to try and get the applications processed electronically. So we're quite quite pleased with saving some money. I'm sure the business offices as well, and we're ahead in the registrations. Facilities custodial update, as of today, there's 120 work orders in the system, 59 are assigned internally, which they're working on as quick as they can amongst all the other end-of-year activities they're setting up for. And 61 work orders are assigned to outside contractors, such as the HVAC vendor and plumber and whatnot. And I also want to honor that for the end-of-year projects. One, I would like to thank the Facilities and Technology Department for the setup for our end-of-year events, but in particular graduation. And two, I'd like to thank them for having to last minute transition to the high school. As you can imagine, our sound vendor, the morning of, very last minute, informed the superintendent that he was not willing to put his equipment out if there was a potential thunderstorm. And even though the weather forecast was trending not in that direction, our facilities and technology staff, after hearing that the vendor wouldn't provide sound for us, went into action and did the best they could working with the high school. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues and admin for going over to volunteer as well, because they did, they helped with the ticketing process. So aside from that, we are planning our summer projects and cleaning schedule. I'm expecting to have the buildings thoroughly cleaned. A checklist has gone out to all of the staff. Transportation, we continue to meet weekly with Durham School Services. Services seem to have leveled off. I don't think we're going to see any more improvements. Drop off and pickup times have slightly improved. We've also received the initial feedback from the Transpass study and Dr. McGee and I need to kind of take a look at that. And we're going to have a subcommittee meeting to discuss the results of the initial results and the long-term planning as it relates to the new school. School safety, this week, we'll be issuing a new purchase order for the new communication systems that was approved on May 28th. We anticipate starting the project over the summer and we will continue to work through the school year to update all of our systems, which is telephones, clocks, bells and intercoms. And finally, our fire inspections are currently underway and we'll be scheduling our building inspections later this month. We schedule these inspections before the summer starts to provide our facility staff time to make the necessary appears to any identified deficiencies that they may come across so we can start the buildings open and hopefully with any deficiencies corrected. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. Any questions, comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have three items in new business. The first, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Wensocket School Committee's resolution to endorse the city ordinance authorizing the granting of an easement to the Narragansett Electric Company to install, maintain and operate an underground distribution system to distribute power for the George T. Nussody Elementary School to be constructed on city land at Lot 90, tax assessment map 11. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa and Mr. Leclerc. Obviously, this is, since we manage that land, the city council needs a resolution from the school committee authorizing and acknowledging the fact that we're approving, getting an easement so that the school will have power. And you have, you have that resolution in your packet. We have it here. If if we pass it, we have it here for our signature along with all the the assessment maps and et cetera. Is there any discussion on this item? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Good, because our new school will have power now. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve a cash transfer to the Rhode Island Health and Education Building Corporation, R I H B E C, for funding the new school construction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa and Mr. Leclerc. Mr. Perrier, let me turn it over to you.
So this is the third transfer that the school committee hopefully authorized this evening. So far, the school committee has transferred $5 million. There was a $2 million and a $3 million transfer. This represents the final amount that is due for the new school, short a quarter million dollars. So at this point, if this is approved tonight, we'll, at that point, have transferred 6.75 million dollars to Rybeck. We've held back a quarter million dollars because we are hopeful to buy, make some purchases on the next school committee meeting that will be reimbursed to us via housing aid. So by holding some of this money back, we'll be able to pay for maybe some purchases for the new school and then get reimbursement at our 93% on top of that quarter million dollars. So in a way, we're trying to get a little more mileage on that last quarter million dollars. We'll see what happens if we're able to get that off. If we're unable to get that off, we will just transfer that remaining quarter million dollars to Rybeck. And at that time, the school will be fully funded per the Wensocket Education Department. At that point, we've committed all the funds that we said we were going to commit to the new school.
And these funds, the total amount of funds that we will have given or paid to the corporation is something that we've been holding, that we've been holding for the last few years.
Yeah, that's correct.
So it's not something new that's coming out of this year's budget or next year's budget?
No, it's being funded by the savings that we were able to realize during S R, the S R times. We were able to close with a bit of a fund balance in 2024 and that's helped us fund this project on our own.
Excellent. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kepiscus?
I have a question. There's been news reports of late that the bonds that are supposed to support this education building fund are not selling. Are our funds already committed by R I D? Are we part of a prior bond? Or are we up in the air if these bonds don't sell? Because my concern is we've now handed $5 million, potentially $6 million over to this corporation. What if they don't have the bond sold and we can't build the school?
Ms. Kepiscus, I can't comment on the status of those bonds. I, I've not, I'm not aware of any problems with the bond selling, but again, I am not the authority on the subject for sure. So I really can't, I really can't comment on what the status is as far as the state's portion of this project.
Thank you.
So that's something that obviously we'll be monitoring as we go along, because obviously we're up to our neck in this project. We've been at it now for three, four years. So like, there's nothing that's come across our desks that, from R I D anyway, that says we're, we've got a problem. When we've talked to Dr. Correño, so far, those funds are fine, they're there.
Nothing's been reported to me as far as problems with the state portion. Talking about, we, we have signed, there is a signed contract, so we are committed at this point. So that's a little concerning to hear, Ms. Kepiscus, I'm not going to lie. But again, news to me, I, nothing of that nature has come across my desk, but I will certainly be on the lookout for it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
No, hold on. So now that she's asked that, if, if something does happen with those bonds, what happens
That's going to be something that we're going to have.
That's, uh, it's going to be interesting to see what happens then.
Exactly.
So we have a contract, the state has a contract with us also, so they're, they'd be liable also, correct?
Um, the answer should be yes, but.
It is the state.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't mean to put a damper on everyone's night, but.
Mrs. Kepiscus, you, you splash some nice water on this.
Well, I, I'm just concerned because it's all over the news that the Charter Care and the Education Building Corporation bonds are not selling. If we're already funded from the prior bonds, I don't care. I do care, but if we're funded from this bond that's not selling, I'm really scared.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I am not the finest guy, but there's one point that I think, Mr. Perier, we've talked about, we've, the building committee has approved payments out of the, out of bond money. I don't know if they're taking out of the money we've contributed, because I don't know how much we paid, but the building committee approves invoices regularly and has been since last summer. So unless they've been taking all those payments out of our money, we, we'd have to go look. I, I would assume the state's contributing towards them, but, but we'd have to go back and, and look. And quite frankly, they have a meeting with us next Monday, a virtual meeting with us next Monday with the school building authority. So I, I think we'll have an opportunity then to, to ask a clarifying question. Right, Monday, Mr. Perier? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, too, another, another view on this. Our program was put in place several years ago, so this is not new. So we were in the loop several years ago. And then we just see on the news this past week, Pawtucket building two new high schools, Middleton building a new high school. So obviously, they must be further down the, the limit here of the bond money. So I would think we, hopefully, we have a, the bond that we're involved in has already been taken care of, so. But it seems to be a lot of money that already people spend.
It's something, it's something to watch, but I agree with you. I mean, it's been in the news as well that these towns are building schools. So it's a concern, so we'll, we'll have to watch out for this, because it's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclaire.
Yes.
Third item, we have a new business. I'll make a motion to discuss on the assistance from the city for the demolition of the Barryfield Clubhouse. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclaire and Mrs. Costa? At one of our building committee meetings, the mayor had indicated that he would more or less provide, help us with the demolition of the Barryfield Clubhouse. And it appears to me that we need, you know, we want that assistance from the city to do so, whether it's 100% or whatever percent they're going to assist us with. So it seems to me that we need, as a committee, to either issue a resolution or a letter to the city council and to the administration regarding, asking them for the assistance for the demolition of the clubhouse. Mr. Perier, Mr. Notoriani, do you have anything to add to this? Because I know you, you've also been involved in this.
Yeah, so it's, the contractors are estimating it's about $250,000 to tear down the clubhouse. That was not budgeted for, part of the previously mentioned bonds, because the school originally was set back. So that is an add feature to a budget that's already established. And Mr. Borger, Chairman Borger is correct, I think it was mentioned at one of our meetings. So we're requesting it. We're asking you to approve a, a letter this evening to go to the city council that we're hoping to get on the docket for Monday, but we want to demonstrate to the school building authority that we're asking for this, because on Monday, as I just stated, we have a meeting with the school building authority, and one of the items to discuss is what we're going to do about the clubhouse and how we're going to tear it down. Or if the city cannot assist us, where we're going to find the money to tear it down in order to put the new school there, so.
Any thoughts on this? I'd like to make a motion to authorize our legal counsel to prepare a letter to go to the, to the administration requesting assistance for the demolition of the building.
Second.
I'm sure he did that.
No, this is.
Is there anything in the building that people would want, and we could sell things or, or auction things off or having a?
So my understanding, there were some pictures of former students hanging on the walls, but I think those have already been kind of divvied up in the past. My, I'm being told historically, not presently, we didn't do that. Everything else has been cleared out and moved over to the high school to be stored over there, because we renovated the locker rooms and we have the new cast park stuff. So aside from what was probably already taken and hanging on some of these basement wall or living room wall, whatever, I don't think there's anything else that's left there. We did have it reviewed, there's no asbestos or lead, there's no contaminants, it can just be completely demolished. I know it's a sad thought, but it, it's something that, again, wasn't included, so.
How long has the building been there?
I would have to defer to Dr. McGee or Chairman Borger. I believe there was a plaque that was retrieved.
It was lifted in the Civil War, during the Civil War is when it was.
So.
Did you help?
I, I was, I laid the bricks.
Oh, my.
It's been there a while, it's been there a long time.
It has. We, we've cleared it completely out. We're going to leave a few things, bring a few things back. We're going to continue to use the property just briefly over the summer until they stop the full construction in late September. And, and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one more question before?
Of course, yeah.
Define assistance.
Money.
Money.
Money or?
And then we're going to have to go off to RFP.
Money or, if I may, Chairman, money or, I believe part of the conversation could be is maybe, maybe, maybe there's some skilled workers on the city side that could demo the actual building, I don't, I don't know. It was, it was kind of a brief exchange as a potential, I think, Mr. Claire, I don't know if you were present there for it.
I was left with the impression the city would do the demolition as opposed to cash.
Versus, yeah, I don't think we're getting money for it. I think, I think the building committee, it was more of a.
Value of it, they would take care of it, but if they agree to do this, then they're probably going to have to go to RFP to, to knock it down, because they may have to use somebody.
I was left with the impression it might be D P W. I don't want to speak for Mr. D'Agostino, and if he's listening on the radio now, Mr. D'Agostino, that director, I am, that's not what I'm implying. I, that was maybe in my head, but I, I, I was under the impression the city might be able to assist physically of, of removing it. We do not, we probably have the skill to do it, but we don't have the equipment on the school side.
I, I could be wrong, but I think the mayor suggested that the city would do the demolition itself as opposed to going RFP.
That was my impression also.
But either way, if, if they handle it, whether they go RFP and they pay for it, they handle it, they do it, we're still in the positive, so.
I was just wondering too, if, if anybody has a nostalgic feel for this field house? I mean, I haven't been around here for decades. Could we, could we sell a brick? People can buy a brick as a souvenir.
I don't, so.
I don't think it's nostalgia.
Isn't that what, sometimes, I mean?
So, so while we did study.
Chairs.
The fundraising.
There's about 250,000 bricks in that building.
We'll sell it for a dollar and it'll go towards the fundraising that we mentioned earlier.
If you haven't, if you have been, if you've walked through that building, you know you're not going to sell a brick. You might not have a shot, but maybe a piece of the grandstand, maybe, but I don't think we're going to be selling too much out of that building, really.
We can start a secondary committee if you'd like to be in charge of it.
Yes, that's right. You could be the part of the fundraising committee, Vice Chair.
Brick by brick, huh?
That's a good name for it.
I, maybe facilities could collect the spare bricks and we'd bring them over, and the business office could kind of work with me and sell them individually. I'm, I'm, I mean, that's something we could do. I know they did it in North Providence, my former elementary school, they tore it down, they, they sold.
Senator Notoriani will discuss this after the meeting.
Sure, in the building committee meeting.
Yeah, my goodness.
There you go, on Monday.
The deconstruction meeting.
I pass it to you guys.
Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor to request assistance from the city for the demolition of, of the, of the Barryfield Clubhouse. We do have a second. Any more conversation on this?
Yes. Are we sure that there's no historic significance attached to this building?
Yes, there's no.
That it's going to create a problem like this monstrosity out here in the parking lot?